I'll wait for your key, Matt.
Jennifer, whenever Jennifer's ready, I'm ready.
Hey, Matt, can you check the the bridge line really quick? We're having a hard time with the audio.
What do you mean the bridge line?
The Samantha's not able to hear the regular meeting from the other line.
Yeah, I was waiting until we started to bridge it.
Okay, very good. All right. All right. Good evening. The time is 7:08 PM. It is Tuesday, July the 7th, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic.
For which is standing.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the City Secretary, please call the roll.
Mitchell?
Here.
Coach?
Here.
Allison?
Present.
Yep. Okay. Rizzo?
Here.
Vialobos?
Present.
Tobias?
Here.
All right, seven members present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All right, is motion by Councilmember Vialobos that we approve the minutes for June 13th, June 16th, and the special meetings for June 16th, seconded by Councilmember Tobias. Is there any further discussion? All as a favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, citizen comment period with city council. At this time, we ask anyone who is registered to speak to to state your name for the record and keep your comments to three minutes. I believe we have a few signed up and registered. Samantha, go ahead.
Sheil, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Mitchell and city council members. My name is Gladys Carrillo with the Mothers for Black Lives advocacy group. As you may have heard during the inaugural Dialogue for Peace and Progress Summit, we verbalized a set of action items for the city's consideration and are continuing to advocate for them today. These action steps were emailed to Mayor Mitchell as he requested during the event, but no response was received from him. We also had the opportunity to discuss these items with Councilmember Ellison, but nothing resulted from our discussion, aside from our concerns being noted. I'm glad, however, that Chief Barnett and Captain Armandus have established additional meetings with our group to implement some of our recommendations. I'm also glad to see on the agenda today that Mr. Sellers would be updating us about the Spanish PSA campaign for COVID-19, giving Mothers for Black Lives vocalize our concern for lack of public communication in Spanish. So on behalf of the Kyle community that includes members of our group, Mothers for Black Lives comes before you today to again reiterate and recommend the following action steps to your consideration. Conduct intentional outreach to community members of color and engage the participation in local government. This was also recommended to Kyle Police Department to improve positive visibility and relationships with law enforcement. Invest in public, in improving public communication to non-English speakers in the community and utilize more accessible virtual platforms. Provide more staff training to build cultural competence and diversify your workforce. This was also recommended to Kyle PD and included specific increased training to racial, in racial profiling, de-escalation techniques, and the proper use of the Carter restraint. Approve the proposed revision to section 7.06 of the city charter to establish a community coalition into reduce crime by improving relationships, increase community engagement, and promote cooperation. This could also improve police policies and implement diversion programs like sight and release, but it could potentially lead towards better prevention efforts and increase wraparound social services to the community. This coalition could further conduct a community assessment, as we've already recommended, to better assess and understand public needs, challenges, and barriers to creating trusting relationships. I hope the council will take time to consider these recommendations and actually take action to enact positive systemic change to benefit Black lives and by extension, people of color in the Kauai area. Thank you.
Thank you, Gladys.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Victor Medina. Reason for me being on this call today is in regards to item number 13, the approval of resolution finding the city Kyle that the tax rates increased from 3.5 to 8%. I would hope that the council reconsider and take a second look at this due to the current situation with the COVID-19. I think our city has been spending a little bit too much money on other things that are not really important to our city, example being a $55,000 Christmas tree. So I ask council to please take a second look at this increase in tax rate and take a good hard second look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our citizen comment.
Okay. All right, next up, City Manager's report. Mr. Sellers.
Mayor and Council, Scott Sellers, for the record, I am going to share my screen and go through a quick presentation with my updates. First on the City Manager's report is operations and programming. As we we announced last week, we have closed City Hall again based on the current COVID-19 statistics in the area. And with that said, we wanted to reiterate to the community that just as we had done before, all of our services are still available online or or via the phone. So please don't hesitate to reach out. Our public meetings, as you can see by this meeting, they are back to virtual meetings, and the way to sign up is on the agenda. You can also find that online with the link that's there on the screen. Payments, applications, permits, service requests, et cetera, are available online and by mail. The Kyle Public Library had done a great job with curbside service and will continue to do that. In addition, our library has two computers that we have placed in the foyer for emergency use by our residents. And so if you feel the need to come in and use those, those are available. You can reserve items online by email, and there is the link to do so by phone or by text. We did make the the decision, it was painful, but we we made the decision to close the pool and the summer camps until further notice. We we still don't know when we're going to open those up, but the safety of our residents and our staff was was obviously paramount making that decision. Additionally, movies on the square and market days as well have been canceled until further notice. So wanted to again bring that back up to the attention of the community, as well as from a operation standpoint, council, I am out of town off and on through the next couple of weeks. So I have sent you a notice of that, and Assistant City Manager James Earp will be acting in my stead when I'm out. The Fourth of July fireworks show, really a great job all the way around and probably way too many people to thank. But I wanted to thank specifically Mariana Espinoza and the Parks Department for working with our fireworks vendor and securing the area for the night. We had multiple other departments that helped patrol through the night, police, public works. Our fire district was out. We did patrol our neighborhoods throughout the evening as well after the city fireworks show, and I am happy to announce that that the night was was very successful. Not only was the fireworks show received very well, great finale. We had our our residents and our visitors were very cautious and followed very well our social distancing requirements. We didn't find many reports to respond to. So again, just a big thank you all the way around and a shout out to the whole community for for being extra diligent this year during our show. As was mentioned a little earlier, we have made our PSA campaign for COVID in in Spanish. We did this a little while ago, but we have not taken the foot off the gas pedal on this. We we have several announcements that have been translated into Spanish. We created Spanish placards and cards that we we have erected in many of our stores, gas stations, and other locations throughout the city during our our mass food giveaway events. We have placed cards in bags. We found a local family, and I'll have Councilmember Tobias talk about this here in a moment, but but we have taken pictures with them and done some some online and spots for our our Channel 10. We've placed pictures up on the billboard, so we've done quite a bit, and we've heard great feedback from this. So with with that, I wanted to to pause and allow Councilmember Tobias just to to talk a little bit more in depth about the campaign.
Thank you, Scott. In May of this year, COVID Task Force was formed due to the growing number of reported cases rising in Kyle, at the same time when the governor opened up the state back to essential workers. So with our Communications Director Samantha Armbruster, along with Councilman Rizzo and Councilman Vialobos, we started a Spanish-speaking marketing campaign to reach out to our Latino Hispanic community as they were fitting into that category. So our goal was to get a public service announcement out there, a video in Spanish, an Espanol, and a pamphlet also in Spanish, which see here, which is also on your screen, posters, they'll provide the same information and get the social media on the city webpage in Spanish. Most of the distributions that we did was also on the K10 channel on YouTube. Neighborhood grocery stores and gas stations have these pamphlets and the posters out there. We also hit restaurants, job sites, churches, and also we've been very involved with the Central Texas Food Bank distributions. And so when residents were getting their groceries, they got one of these pamphlets placed inside their boxes as well to give more information about the dangers of this virus that's going on. Really wanted to reach out to our our Spanish-speaking community in that sense. This was very successful, with the help of so many staff members. Scott Sellers, thank you. Mario Perez, Jerry Hendricks, of course, Rachel Sonia as well, and also Samantha Armbruster for helping with the videos. We also had some local residents who participated and gave a lot of their time and efforts. I'd like to thank Alicia Davila for the being part of the cover on the pamphlet, Karina Arizana, who did the video in Spanish, in Espanol, and Dr. Michelle Cohen for giving some insight on the videos in English. And so it was a great success, but like our City Manager says, this is just starting. We've got a long way to go, and we're going to continue to reach out to our Hispanic, Spanish-speaking community as much as possible on this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank thank you very much. And clearly, you know, we we have had initiatives in the past, but we are learning in this this COVID-19 effort has really elevated our game as as we are, we're much more able to to get the word out in multiple languages now, and and that will only continue with with future initiatives. So thank you very much, Councilmember Tobias.
So Scott, if I could add a little bit to that, I can tell you that our flyers that we've been putting out have really worked and are catching a lot of people's attention. Actually, Senator Judith Saferini's office asked for some of our flyers because she really thought they were amazing, our Spanish flyers. So I thought I'd add that little point to it, that I think we're making a difference, and I think awareness and about COVID-19 is the best tool we have right now. And I'm glad, I want to thank Samantha and all the city staff and the council members that worked on this. It's it's been a great effort. I I can't stress enough on how much, you know, information on COVID-19, getting that out there to the residents can help mitigate some of the spread. So thank you all.
And if I could just add real quick, when we were doing the distribution, we've had two of them so far, and a total of 2,400, 2,454 pamphlets were distributed between those two dates to residents. But we reached out to that many people within those two time periods. That's not including the feeds that we're getting on the video from Espanol, from from Karina's, almost 2,000 views. So we're getting the message out there. So I want to thank everybody for your efforts.
I think another thing that would be remiss is that when we first brought this forward, it was through a collaborative effort with the with the county as well, with regards to messaging and tag teaming that that demographic that needed to understand and be educated with regards to COVID-19. A lot of this messaging has been shared with other municipalities, and they've been able to utilize those in their in in their areas and their jurisdictions gracious enough to take our our logos off so they can they can own them and utilize their own logos in some of the areas throughout the county. So those have been shared there. Also, what spawned off just a a messaging campaign like this is that the extension from the Hispanic, the U.S. Hispanic Contractors Association reached out and was asking to double down on on messaging because we have a significant population that lives here in Hayes County that works in in the metro areas, and they were seeing that their increased numbers, some of their projects with less employees there because of COVID-19. So that was the the spawn of of coming forward and and really entertaining the idea of creating a messaging campaign like this. So I was glad that everybody was able to take upon, and thank you very much for all the people that took on their roles and 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 really knocked it out of the park, and we continue to be a model, not only for the county but for the region.
Right. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, I'll second it and just try to be really brief. I appreciate all the council's effort in continuing these campaigns. I think between COVID and what has happened this year and a lot of attention towards race relations and different things in our country, more so this year, you know, I think it's it's kind of as I'm not sure who said it earlier, it might have been you, Mr. Sellers, but kind of opened our eyes in many ways of where we really need to reach out and to communities we're maybe missing. And this is all in a continued effort. This is this is one step, is a great step. We have more steps we need to make. I think it's it's important to remember, you know, I know we had the representative from Mothers for Black Lives speak earlier. You know, there's some great recommendations in there. I think these are part of those things that it takes implementing these things and putting these things together and learning how we can continue to change and pivot, how we reach out to certain communities that perhaps we haven't been reaching out to for one reason or the other in the past. That's going to be an ongoing effort. It's not going to change in a day or a week or a month. We need to continue to do this. We need to be mindful of it when we go into our budget workshops and preparing for communication and getting our our departments, whatever resources we need to have in order to communicate in multiple languages, in order to reach every part of our community. We even learned some lessons as far as American Sign Language and having that available and various different things. So just an ongoing effort. It's not going to be something that's just on and forgotten. I think this is just continue to do building blocks on what we're already doing, and I just challenge everyone to continue to work at that, and thank you for continuing that effort, Councilmembers and staff.
All right. We had our inaugural Dialogue for Peace and Progress Summit, and several of you participated directly in that. I know everybody was was part of that in some form or fashion on council and many of the staff here, and I do want to thank those of us or those of our community that participated and all those who who tuned in as well to the event. There was quite a bit of participation, many viewers, and we've we've heard some very good feedback from the event. So I did want to give council an opportunity to to provide any sort of summarizing comments or comments on on how we're we're continuing to move forward on that event.
I'll just say for myself that it was pretty amazing, and I think the sentiment that I've heard in the community has been that those who participated in the what was became, I think, about a three-hour conversation really walked away impressed and and honestly spurred to consider for themselves, you know, what what how their actions contribute in society, either positively or negatively. So it was really a very unique event. We've never done anything quite like it right in the middle of COVID-19. So there were there were technological challenges, you know, that we pushed through and were able to deliver technologically, you know, an event that we could have ever done in a pandemic, but for the great work of our IT department and our communications department. And obviously, you know, there are representatives from the police department, there are representatives from our local community. We had a few, it just every different kind of slice of life and perspective, a lot of historical discussion, as well as, you know, the representation of our law enforcement officers there, including Chief Barnett and Philip Cleary, who is the president of the Law Enforcement Association locally. And so Officer Cleary was there, and it just just wow, it was incredible. And obviously, this entire event was the brainchild of Councilmember Ellison, who has continuously helped us to 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 realize the value and importance of Juneteenth and and has been leading us in some pretty profound ways on that topic. So I don't know if Councilmember Ellison, if you had anything you wanted to add, but I sure was very thankful and honored just to be invited and get to participate in it.
Absolutely. Thank you for putting this on the agenda. I'll try to be brief. I definitely have a lot of feelings and thoughts about this event, but I want to take just a brief, short time to thank, as the mayor said, our communications department, which Samantha, I can't thank you enough for all your help with that. I know it was kind of maybe difficult at times to understand my vision for the event, but you kept running with it and stayed right there by my side and helped make it a huge success. Thanks to also Matt and our IT department for helping us and even to the last minute, preparing and pivoting with us to make that happen. And then all the support from staff. I had a number of staff members reach out to me leading up to the event with curiosities about it and mention watching it, which that meant a great deal to me. But I also want to thank the council. The council has been very supportive with these efforts, as Mayor has mentioned, in the past, with additional efforts to be more culturally aware about the diversities in our community and the makeup of our community, as well as learning more about Juneteenth and the historical significance of that. And it certainly was an honor to to lead this panel, which was a great discussion. It certainly did last longer than we had anticipated, but the discussion was just too great to cut off, and some really great dialogue happened. I want to thank Councilmember Sheil for helping me with the paddles and getting those done. She took that on like a champ, like she always does. I want to thank, I know, probably to to the person on the council, Councilmember Vialobos, Mayor Pro Tim, showing up and showing their support meant a lot. I know Councilmember Rizzo and Tobias also as well shared with me their support. And I know each and every one of you all probably had things that you all wanted to say as far as what we were talking about that evening, but you decided to be supportive and listen and 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 show that you speak up in other ways for that. So I want to thank the entire council for that. That really did mean a lot to me. And as I was saying earlier, there was a lot of great discussion that happened, some really touching stories and some very powerful stories that were shared, and hopefully gave folks a different perspective than perhaps they hadn't hadn't had before, and hopefully lead into conversations within their families and neighbors and throughout the community on on topics and discussions that maybe they haven't had before. This certainly didn't end and wasn't meant to be peaked at that event. That was certainly meant to be a jumping off point to find ideas and continue to work towards implementing them. And one of the things I've talked about, and I promise I will be quiet after this, but one of the things I talked about of not only having the importance and awareness of where we are now and making these changes and 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 keeping this in the in our dialogue and consciousness, but it's how do we keep this up months down the line? How do we keep this up going for years down the line? How do we set a precedent in our city to continue to have these dialogues and continue to work towards engaging with certain sectors of our community that maybe feel they have disparate treatment, or maybe feel their voices aren't being heard, or maybe aren't getting the outreach that they want? How do we continue that effort for even future councils beyond us that sit on the council now to continue to adopt and engage in that that community involvement and willing to listen and sit down and hear that? And then I'll be remiss if I didn't say this. I want to thank the our Chief of Police, Captain was also there, even though he wasn't on the panel, and then President of the Kelié, Officer Cleary. I can't thank them enough for willing to sit there on the panel and have a discussion. At times, it might have been difficult, but that's what we need to build a stronger community. It's bringing all of us to the table to have a discussion and find those solutions together. It's no one team against the other. It truly is bringing us all together. Thank you.
All right, Scott, did you have any other things in your City Manager's report? Was that it?
Yes, sir. This, can you still see my screen?
There you go.
Okay. So finally, we have two additional mass food distribution events planned. First one is coming up on July the 11th. That's a the Saturday. And then we have another one Thursday, August 13th, both from eight till 11:00. Same location as the last couple of events at the Smile Direct facility. That's just north of Home Depot in the HPI Industrial Park. And a big thank you to Councilmember Rizzo for for continuing this, and of course, our our great partnership we have with the Central Texas Food Bank for putting these events on. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Scott. All right. Next up, appointments, appointment of Joanne Rossi, Ascension Seaton Hayes to the EDN Tourism Board. I think this position is going to be requested to be postponed. Diane, do you have anything you wanted to add?
No, that's correct. She just wanted, needs it postponed until next month.
Okay. All right, seeing none, I'm going to move to presentations. First up is Parks and Recreation Month proclamation. Councilor Sheil.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope everybody can hear me now. All right. So City Council proclamation, whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Kyle, and whereas our parks and recreation are virtually important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens and contributing to the economic and environmental well being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environment, environmental well being of our community. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect protect groundwater, preventing flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to the to development and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreational areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the city of Kyle recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of Kyle, Texas, that the month of July shall hereby be known as Parks and Recreation Month in the Kyle Hayes County, Texas. And that the City Council encourages the community to explore the city's surrounding community parks, events, and programs. And I'd like to add to this. I know because of the COVID pandemic, you know, we are having to shut down a lot of our recreational programming. Our parks are still open. Please, of course, you know, follow social distancing and, you know, encourage, you know, safety measures, but enjoy our parks. They are beautiful and we have and our Parks Department works very hard to keep them maintained and pretty. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sheel. Is there anyone who wishes to say anything on top of that?
Mayor Councilmember Rizzo, I just want to thank the Parks Department, the Trails Department. During this pandemic, you know, people have been in their homes. They've been trying to social distance and sometimes it can be a little crazy. I'm just going to say it that way. It can drive you a little insane being cooped up and having our trails open, having our parks to be able to go out and enjoy some fresh air. It's refreshing to our citizens in Kyle. So I just want to say thank you to our Parks Department, everyone else and for allowing us, our residents to have a place to go to, to keep some sanity during this crazy pandemic. And I think we're doing a great job as a city to make sure we keep those open. So thank you. Thank you also, Mayor.
We have a great and very hard working Parks and Rec Department. They have shown that time and time again. I certainly appreciate everything that they do from the trails to our parks and continue the role, no matter, sometimes they are a little shorthand for various reasons, but they they never complain. They continue to do the job every day. So thank you, Councilmember Sheel, for putting this together. And thank you for the recognition for our Parks Department, who continues to do an awesome job for our city.
All right. Thank you so much. I wish we could do a photograph with you, Mariana and team. We can do like a virtual one perhaps at some point in time. But there you are. Hey, Mariana. I know Scott mentioned it with the Fourth of July, but y'all did an incredible job organizationally to help put that fireworks show together from the billboards to the coning. I know I saw you out there Saturday mid morning and throughout the day, just sweating, just working your tail off, trying to get everything set up to keep people safe. And those, you know, the community, they they come in, they should, it's when it's all set up, they just think, wow, this is great. And they sit down, enjoy the show and leave. But the council in particular, you know, we see the work that goes into everything you had to do leading up to that show. And then obviously, when the fireworks are off, you don't just go home and go to bed like, you know, the rest of us do. You just keep right on working, cleaning up and trying to make our city look great. So thank you. Just thank you for that and very deserving to be recognized for this month. Any further thoughts on that? Kudos. Thanks for bringing it forward, Councilwoman Sheel. All right, next up, Agenda item number eight. Approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Kyle, Texas, affirming support and partnership with the 2020 census. This is my item. There is a resolution supporting the census. We all pretty much know what it is, fairly certain that the entirety of this council affirms the need for us to continue supporting the efforts to get as many people in our community to to register and fill out the census. So unless there's a strong reason for me to read through the whole thing, I'm just going to make a motion to approve because it is a resolution.
I second it.
All right, it's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. Is there any further discussion? You might have anything you want to say on the census?
Yes.
Go ahead.
In and of itself, I know we are listed as number five in the county as far as the census is concerned. And I'm still trying to, that's a challenge and that we could do a lot better in that census in recouping and also as part of gaining dollars for a lot of the different services that we need in our community, especially in this environment. It's very important that we count everyone. And I would challenge all of our staff and people included, citizens included, to get out, self identify, get your census done. We need to get the messaging out to ensure that we're getting these people counted. I think we're probably right around 55 to 57% if I'm not mistaken. We need to be to 80% to ensure that we maximize as much as we can. It'd be nice to get 100%, but I know that that's 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 our goal standards. But 80% will be an increase from our last census in this particular area. You want to get there. It's important. It's important for education. It's important for fire service. It's important for healthcare and all of those gaps in in services to our people, but things that the local governments have to pick up the tab on. So the census is very important. And I would I would continue to challenge everyone to make sure that they understand that it is important, that it's easy to do. It's just 10 questions. It takes maybe 10 to 12 minutes to to fill out the survey. Everything is confidential. It has kept at its highest confidentiality for over 75 years. So just be be assured that the information is safe and no one uses it other than it provides a great opportunity for for dollars coming to our community at the local level as well.
Absolutely.
I don't know that anybody's going to be able to top that one. That was about perfect. All right, did I get a second on the motion? I forgot, Councilmember Rizzo. All right, okay, motion by the mayor, second by Councilmember Rizzo. All those members say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, Agenda item number nine, presentation from HDR regarding update on the Kohler's Crossing Grade Separation Project. This is Lee Freinberg.
Good evening, Mayor Mitchell and City Councilmembers. Let me bring my screen up here. Thank you. My name is Lee Freinberg. I'm with HDR Engineering. I'm working on the Kohler's Crossing UPRR grade separation improvements. I plan to provide a brief project status update and then turn it over to any questions. Project timeline, we got NTP notice to proceed in late 2019. We completed all of the site investigation work, which is the survey and a lot of the geotech. Early in 2020, we went and moved on to the project criteria. That was completed in early 2020 and moved on to the alternative recommendation memo. We compared, we investigated and compared three alternatives for this Kohler's Crossing UPRR grade separation. We looked at taking Kohler's Crossing under UPRR and then two configurations of taking Kohler's Crossing over UPRR. Originally, we thought there was a lot of merit with the taking Kohler's Crossing under UPRR option as it avoided the high voltage electric lines right there at Kohler's Crossing. However, there were a few things that were required to make that option feasible. One was to make the drainage work. We wanted, we didn't want to use a pump station there. We wanted to drain, gravity drain everything to the east of Bunton Branch. And the second thing, we thought we were avoiding utilities, but it turns out there's a lot of major utilities underneath Kohler's Crossing at that particular location. I'll briefly go through one of the over configurations and then spend a little bit more time with the preferred over configuration. Right now, we are preparing for a public involvement meeting. Or actually, it's going to be a virtual open house that should be scheduled for later this month. So what you see on the screen here is Kohler's Crossing along the horizontal axis and then UPRR roughly along the vertical axis. You can see the Austin Community College of Hayes campus there. To our left is FM 1626 and to our right out of the screen is Kyle Crossing. The colored sections of Kohler's Crossing shows where the road improvements are set to begin and end. All the purple and the yellow are improved grade in situation. We need to take the grade up over Kohler's Crossing. So as we progress from the left side of the screen to the right side of the screen, we go up on embankment and then the orange represents the bridge location. So we needed to completely bridge the UPRR right away. Move on to the to the next side here, which is just to the east of the last slide that I showed. This slide shows how the grade separation improvement would work and provide access to all of the buildings and current businesses in the area. So moving from right to left, going westbound on Kohler's Crossing, you could you could stay to the left and go up and over UPRR and back down. Or you can merge up to the right on the green frontage road system and make a right in, right out at the PEC substation. You could turn around, be a fairly narrow Texas turnaround, make a right in, right out at the new ENF semiconductor facility and then continue on to make a right in, right out at RSI Technologies or RSI Incorporated and Marketplace. There were a few feasibility issues associated with this alternative, mainly safety and driver expectation. With the eastbound movement of Kohler's Crossing here on the screen, it was, there was a large concern that a left hand merge from nearly a stopped condition on this frontage road system would cause safety considerations. So we did not elect to move this option to the preferred status. Moving on to the typical section of actually the the preferred alternative. This is the existing section that is to the west of the Hayes Community Campus or ACC. We've got two 11 foot lanes in each direction and a 12 foot turn lane into and out of the campus and then a variable median. We are going back in with an eight foot sidewalk. Right now, there's a six foot sidewalk. I can show in a few more slides, so we're widening that out a little bit and carrying that over the bridge. The next section is as we approach the UPRR Railroad. We're up on embankment here again with two 11 foot lanes. We've got a center barrier as well as edge barriers and the chain link fence over UPRR on that would be on both sides. So quite a bit of safety improvements here, keeping everyone on the road and providing an eight foot sidewalk all the way through the corridor. This is what the plan looks like in in plan view. Again, a very similar color scheme. You can see all of the improvements in the in the various colors. So the purple and the yellow represent project footprint. It increases grade as we move from the left side of the screen to the right till we're up on the bridge on on the orange. Go over UPRR and then we can, you can see in this screen, we've got a slightly wider Texas turnaround here. I also want to point out in this particular slide, the sidewalks. So we take the existing sidewalk, which you need to rebuild some to get it to ADA standards as it frames into our project. We take it away from the side, barrier separate it and put it up against our new project footprint so that it can be on the bridge as it goes up over the top of UPRR and back down. Very similar to the other over configuration. All eastbound traffic has the option to go through up and over the railroad. If you want access to the existing facilities there, you stay on grade at this green frontage road system, right in, right out at PEC, Texas turnaround here right before UPRR right away. We've got a little bit bigger of a radius here. And then again, with the right in, right out at ENF and RSI. This one was better from a safety standpoint and really a geometry and logistics standpoint because it it provided a better merge and better driver expectation when taking the frontage road and merging it back to the main line Kohler's Crossing. So I talked a little bit about where we started out, talked a little bit about the three different options that we evaluated and went and the preferred alternative. Now looking forward, after the the public meeting and we solicit input on the preferred alternative and the refinements to that, we'll be putting together a draft schematic here in a couple of months. That gets submitted for review and turned around to a final schematic that will lead into the environmental process. The environmental process will start in early 2021 and move on to preliminary engineering. The environmental process will end in early 2021 as well. Because we've got a major stakeholder at this location, the UPRR, they've got a, they have quite a bit of review time scheduled in the process. So the we turn in the schematic and UPRR begins what's called their Exhibit A review late 2020, finishing finishing up around 2021. And then they review our preliminary engineering early in 2021 and finish up between first and second quarter of 2021, they'll finish up their review. Now, mind you, these timelines as specified in this in this timeline, they're the maximum that UPRR has to review. So hopefully with good coordination, we can move through the process a little quicker. So that is my very brief update on the project. Are there any questions?
No questions, just good detail, good presentation. Thank you. Thank you for that.
I can tell you, great presentation. I've been waiting about 20 years for a bridge over the railroad tracks here on Kohler's Crossing. So thank you. Thank you for your hard work on this project so far. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I have a question, and that is the public input virtual meeting. Do we have a date for that yet?
We should, that should be announced in the next few days. We should, that should be announced in the next few days. There, there will be several rounds of press releases and a social media campaign. So we will, we will get the word out. I just don't want to say anything before our public involvement team is quite ready.
I understand completely. Thank you.
Are there anyone else? Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and move forward. Next item, agenda number 10, presentation regarding the transportation and economic resiliency study report. Ms. Kathy Raker.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protown, Council members, Kathy Raker, Stormwater Management Plan Administrator. I'd like to introduce Susan Engel King. She is the Executive Director of the Institute for Micro Community Mobility. Community Mobility and Katie Cam, President of Wheels and Water. Both were tasked with completing the transportation and economic resilience study and I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to them for their presentation.
Oh, thank you so much for having us. Thank you for putting us on your agenda. I want to say I appreciate your involvement and your innovative spirit in even commissioning this assignment. And it's just been fascinating listening to your council meeting up until now because this complements some of your objectives so well. I want to introduce Katie Cam who's done the lion's share of the work. But I want to also just add, you asked us to think about what were the opportunities for Kyle. And there really is an opportunity for Kyle to reimagine transportation around people, not cars. And isn't that a switch? And there so much comes with that. When people become more mobile, it achieves a more equitable, more affordable, more inclusive, safer, healthier, more livable and more resilient city. And as my background is economic development as well, your prospects and future are so much greater and more open when you create a community that people want to live in and that has that community spirit. And this mobility supports that. So Katie, you want to describe where we are and where you would go?
Sure. Thank you, Susan. And thank you, Mayor Mitchell and City Council members. First, I want to thank y'all so much for having us do this study. We really enjoyed interacting with the community and with city staff in developing this study. Just a little background on me, I'm a civil engineer and urban planner with Wheels and Water. And I'm also a professor of research at the University of Texas in Arlington. And so I do some transportation research primarily for TechStot. And so let me figure out how to share my screen here and I will jump into the presentation. All right, is it working?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so in this presentation, I'll give an overview of the Phase One study and then go into our Phase Two proposal, which would be a very significant step forward for Kyle to move on to Phase Two to actually develop a plan. And we'll go over the specifics of that at the end. Let's see. Is it still working? It's saying it's paused. We're still good?
We're still good if you just want to.
Okay, okay. I don't know. It's giving me mixed signals over here. Okay. So yes, to give a little bit of overview of the Transportation Economic Resilience Study, the premise of it was that providing a protected network for low-speed mobility modes increases options for residents and visitors. And the idea of creating options is one that supports the idea of resilience. The more options people have, the more resilient people are. Especially in this case, affordable, sustainable options. And we consider a wide range of low-speed vehicles. They are going to have a speed limit 25 miles per hour or less. And they can range from the the neighborhood electric vehicles, which you see there pictured in the middle, the handicap accessible one and the white one. Those can seat from two-seat to, to six-seat. We also include tricycles that have little cargo areas to carry items or carry kids, as well as quadricycles that you see there on the left, which can seat one person or a family. These are super fun modes to use and it'd just be a great way to get around town. I would do want to emphasize that we want to look at this in, in terms of creating a protected network because these vehicles, if you put them on the roadway, especially on roads that are like 45 miles per hour. So these vehicles don't have any crash protection. They're very vulnerable. And so that's why we emphasize this idea of creating protected networks. And I will highlight cities that do that in a minute or so. So to give an overview of Phase One study, we dove into the study by first organizing some focus groups. The first focus group was with Kayak. And well, I don't think it was the first, but it was a fun one. We got to hang out with some high school youth and had discussed with them the future of transportation in Kyle. And they were definitely receptive, very interested in this, had lots of great questions. They were definitely brainstorming. And it was really fun and engaging to talk with them. And Susan actually asked them a question of describing two words, you know, how you would describe this system. So a lot of them used safe, you know, safe, affordable, excitement. And there was one student that said green pragmatism. And that one really stood out because it does describe what this is. It's a very practical, sustainable mode. And so that was, that was enjoyable. And then we met with TechStot and Hayes CISD staff as well as city staff and city council members. And TechStot, both in that focus group and in a separate meeting that we had with them after that focus group, really emphasized the need to have a plan in the city. They need the communities they work with to have plans so that when they go in with a project, they know, okay, the city's already gone through the planning process. This is what they're looking for in their community. And so when they come in with a project, they know, okay, we need to look at this community's plan and incorporate that into our TechStot project. And Susan and I have direct experience with this process of, we worked with Community First Village in East Austin near Ducker Lake. And we were trying to get wider sidewalks going out to Community First Village so that the residents there had more mobility options. We could not get funding or project designs changed because both the county and TechStot and the city said, well, we can't revise or change this project because we don't have a plan to support this change in the project. So it's very important to have a plan if you want to move forward with having these modes considered in future projects. And then the other focus group was with real estate developers, primarily that town. And also Chamber staff was there. And that was great because they were very open to looking at evaluating the current plans for the development and considering how to incorporate low-speed mobility into those plans. So it was a very encouraging meeting. Okay, so we use the feedback from the focus groups to inform what we would include in the study. And common thing that was brought up was, well, how does Kyle compare with the two other cities, Lincoln and Peachtree City that are known for these? So the study includes a side-by-side comparison for various community characteristics. As you can see, Kyle has caught up very, very quickly to the population of Lincoln and Peachtree City and is now comparable and starting to surpass it. So they have similar, all three have similar geographic areas, similar commuting modes, similar vehicle ownership. Very much across the board, very similar cities. One thing did stand out to me when I looked at this data though, and I want to highlight this because I know this is something important to Kyle, is that Peachtree City local retail sales data that I pulled from the American Community Survey, this was last done in 2018, was their retail sales, it was over twice, yeah, more than twice that of Kyle. And the significant thing about Peachtree City is that they have a very local-oriented transportation system. Even though they're like Kyle and that they're just outside Atlanta and there's going to be people commuting from Peachtree City to Atlanta for work. It is very much a community like Susan mentioned where it is just a part of their culture. They have 11,000 registered golf carts, which is equates to about one golf cart per household. And you can find videos and pictures. They just drive these everywhere. And so we're suspecting that because they have such a local-oriented transportation system, that is supporting local retail sales. So that's something to, to keep in mind too, as how this can be used as a way to develop the local economy as well as support residents by providing an affordable transportation option. Column here just kind of summarizes the key takeaways. Focus groups were overall very supportive and very interested, lots of questions. Kyle's very similar to the peer cities. TechStot emphasized the need for design coordination with the district office and the city plan. Hayes CISD was particularly interested, especially the special needs coordinator for the district. She was a great resource and seemed really excited about the opportunities to adapt many of these vehicles for special needs students. And yes, and the multiple economic development goals, which I've already discussed. So I'm going to move on to the next slide.
Okay. It's not showing the next slides. You want it.
Katie, do you want me to share my screen real quick? It hasn't progressed.
Let me, let me re, okay, I think the, okay, let me stop sharing and I'll reshare. I think that's how I can get out of the problem. Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, it was giving me a message on my screen for some reason. Okay. So yes, that was the last column to summarize the takeaways for the study. So the Phase Two proposal is, one, one thing I did look at in the Phase One study is I worked with the GIS team in the city to identify what data do we already have that we can use to kind of sketch out some potential routes. And unfortunately, a lot of data just wasn't complete enough to provide something that I felt could be provided at the Phase One. So the Phase Two proposal includes an extensive data collection, which would support not only this project, but any other projects that city Kyle pursues. That would benefit from a more complete, robust GIS data set. So we'd like to use that data to produce route maps similar to what other cities that are doing this type of NEB planning or low-speed mobility planning are doing. There's an example there on the slide for you. And so that includes looking at easements, sidewalks, right-of-way available, speed limits of roadways, those types of things. So the, the deliverable for Phase Two would be an actual plan document that would have routes, potential routes throughout the city at the neighborhood, city and regional level to connect with other cities. It would also include a facility design development. So we'd come up with cross-sections that work well for a lot of the roadways in Kyle. And we'd also hone in on a few key areas that we think would be good pilot projects and do a little more detailed design work there. So you can start to visualize how this might look in Kyle in these pilot project areas. And then, you know, it's great in the focus group to talk to developers that already have plans in motion. But it would also be nice to already have ordinance in place so that developers know coming in, hey, if I develop here, I need to incorporate some type of infrastructure for these low-speed mobility modes. And that's something Peachtree City, Georgia has done. So they have an ordinance that we can look at and look at other communities that do something similar and see what will work for Kyle. Another section will be implications. And this section will be looking at, you know, the wide variety of reasons why to pursue this building, low-speed mobility modes. And that would be used for future grant applications. We could pull the text from that section to make the case for why Kyle should be getting funding for this. And again, I'll emphasize again that we've already seen this and experienced this firsthand with another community that without a plan, you miss out on money and project coordination. So that's something to really understand with the significance of having a plan in place. And then of course, the proposal or the Phase Two will include action items, concrete action items to move forward for implementation. And we have our schedule and cost below in the slide. So I'm here to answer, Susan and I are here to answer any questions you have about the Phase One study or the Phase Two proposal.
Thank you, Katie. Is there, does anyone have any questions for Katie or Susan or Kathy?
When you talked about the data, you said there was kind of some incomplete data that you weren't able to really create a, an initial, I guess, understanding on where transportation is at this point. How do you, how do you, how are you projecting to get that again? What is your plan for that?
Sure, like so. One way is speed limits were definitely lacking. And so we could do, I mean, I've done this before. You just literally go into Google Images and you just go down each street to find the speed limit sign and you just add that to the database. That's one way to populate the data set to get that type of data. For the roadways that are missing right-of-way information, we can identify which roadways are missing that and go and pull the subdivision plots or any street deeds on that area to see what we can find out for right-of-way there. There's any missing information about pavement width, that's super easy to get and from Google Earth to just use the measure tool. So there's ways to do that both in the field and by computer to complete the data set so that we can have something to, to work off of. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. And is this typical of any of your assessments of other cities that that data is not being tracked fully? Or is this, is this pretty consistent?
And I would say for speed limits, yes, it's consistent that it's hard to get speed limited data. I'm working on another project. I'm actually working on another low-speed vehicle project. It's not a plan for a city or BASH drop. It's a Department of Energy grant to look at a low-speed vehicle shuttle service. And we, I'm in the process of collecting data for that city and I'm having the same issues I'm having here with, you know, getting speed limit data and, you know, full, full set of data on the facility. So yeah, but that's, that's one thing that would be kind of nice about this is like, once we're done with that, we'll hand over the data. You'll have it for this project as well as whatever projects you need for.
Yeah, it can serve for many roles. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kathy or Susan? Katie or Susan? Sorry.
No, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. Looks like you've really been doing your homework on this. So thank you for all the time you've invested in this so far. And just want to say thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on. Next up, agenda item number 11, CIP Road Projects and Agenda Presentation. Mr. Barbara, I think you probably kicked that off. Leon, you're muted.
Disappeared on me. Here we go. Okay, thank you, Council. Leon Barba, City Engineer. This is Malayman Road. Based on current pace estimates, we're at 78% complete. As you know, the bridge concrete is complete. It is close from 500 Bentford Road. And our plan is still to complete this by August of 2020. It, it is possible that within a couple of weeks, they will start putting first layer of pavement down. So that's good news. And then I would say three or four weeks after that, we'll put that final finish on the pavement. So we're getting real close to having this project completed. On Burleson Street, we're about 83% complete. We're almost complete with the French drain construction that we needed to place because of the underground seepage. We did complete the utilities on north of the roundabout. We're just about wrapping up the restoration on the north side of the roundabout of vehicles and paving that. We did finish the bore at the road tracks, thank goodness. And we're getting ready to put the water line in through there. So that's done. We're getting ready to wrap that up. We do plan to start some pavement repairs on July 18th. That's our plan for today. That's what our plan is. And it probably has some closures there from blank over the motor out. What we're going to do is take out some of the pavement. We're going to see what condition is. And depending on the condition, then we'll come back and pave as soon as we can. Again, we're planning to have this ready and open by August of 2020. Southside wastewater improvements, we're still at 52% based on the last pay estimate. We do have three crews working in there now. We have a third crew working on the board post-road. If you've seen that project, they are starting If you've seen that project, they are starting to bore. This is the first of four bores that are going to go under I-35. They're about 450 to 500 feet long. So that'll take a little bit of time to get those bores done. The wastewater treatment plant. Consider agenda item number 16, that is the construction, construction inspection contract with Black and Beach. Current project estimate is about 3.57% complete. They've moved 12,000 cubic yards of material. With rain that we recently had, they had moved out a lot of mud. Uh, we have been keeping the water leaf falls each way updated on progress. I want to point out, uh, if you look at a picture on the upper right and the, the lower left, my project manager asked me to make sure that I let you know, those are women working there. Contractor has five women in non-traditional jobs working on this project. So I'm very impressed. They're doing some pretty tough work down there. And a couple of the other consent agenda items, we are doing our yearly micro-surfing contract. We may start within a month or two. We won't be paying any invoices till October, till any fiscal year. So the contractor is going to be working with us on that. And, uh, on the consent agenda item number 20, that the agreement is a funding mechanism for, for the ground storage tank that's being built and the associated site work. It's also for the elevator storage tank, 800,000 gallon storage tank that's going to be built. And there's a return line that comes back down 150 to call 57 and six creek subdivisions. And that, and each party is being allocated a certain amount of money that they're gonna be paid for that infrastructure. And that's all I had for you. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, Leon, this is Alex. I got a couple of questions. Number one, Western. Were there, there supposed to be some hydro mulch and some sidewalk repair going on over there?
Councilmember, the contractor is still wrapping up some repairs to the wastewater line. And so we still have a punch list. Again, we're still sitting around. There's one issue with the sidewalk. As you would imagine, they claimed that they didn't do the damage to that sidewalk. We're dispatched them to look at it, see if anything would be willing to do. But I don't know if you're gonna respond to us on that.
Okay, and then how about Star of Texas entryway? When do you think we'll get that done? If that's going into Silverado.
Yeah, that would be on our pencil list. Thanks. Do we have a pretty good pencil list right now? Miss lane signs need to be done. So I guess to go right now is get the sidewalks and get the road finished and get it open. Then we're gonna come back and do a lot of work on, uh, behind the curve.
Thank you. So do you, do you have a guesstimate on timeframe?
I would say four, four to five weeks.
Thank you.
I'll keep an eye on that.
Thank you.
Leon, Councilmember Rizzo, uh, great news on Lehman Road project. Thank you for that update. Burleson still has me concerned. Was out there yesterday, took a drive through there. Didn't really see anybody drop, uh, working there. So, uh, just wanted to make sure that we, contractor knows that his date's coming up in August. So, uh, just want to make sure, I believe it's August 20th, correct? And is that correct as a contract final realization date?
The month of August, yes.
Yeah, so just, uh, so he's got all of August. And okay, uh, just, just letting you know, we're getting really close. So, uh, just keeping an eye on that. Thank you, Leon.
Leon, this is Councilman Tobias, um, again on Lehman, appreciate the update. And I noticed the road construction is starting to get close to the school. So, um, is there any plans for any crosswalks as we get closer to the high school, like right up there near the entrance to the parking lot? Will there be any kind of, um, lighting or any kind of, um, pedestrian walkway that's going to be laid out or streamed across? Cause I know once, uh, one school gets out, there's gonna be a lot more traffic. And now we're gonna finally have sidewalks. So I'm wondering if there's gonna be anything, uh, cross, cross paths across the street or somewhere in there where the students can safely cross the street from those sidewalks that are being built.
Councilmember, I'll need to follow up on that. I don't know if we have striping planned for that intersection. I would think we do, at least some cross, some hash marks or something like that, but I'll double check on that.
Okay, we appreciate it. And I know we're shooting for August, which is three more weeks. But there's, is there an actual week or date that they're really pushing to get this done by? So that way I can let some of my constituents know as it's starting to get nearer school. Let them know, hey, it's, you know, I know school starts August 24th. It should be done by then. There could be sidewalks, there could be crosswalks, there could be something of those safety measures there. Cause like I said, it's getting, I can see that construction is almost done, but it's getting close to the school. And I'm wondering if there's gonna be some of that pedestrian safe, uh, intersections available for, and, and the date.
We're, we're planning to start paving that first lift at first in about two weeks. That's the, the schedule the contractor has given us. After, after that, we're, we're asking, we've asked him to consider putting that second layer on as soon as possible since he's got the road closed. So that would make it a lot easier for the contractor if you could go ahead and wrap it all up. So we, we suggested that to him. We're hoping he follows through with that. And then he came back to the, uh, the south end and finished to put the cycle layer on that one. So we're trying to encourage him to do that section there and complete it and just get out of, get out of the area as quickly as possible. Our plan is to finish before school starts. That's, that's definite. Yes.
Yes. Okay. Well, thank you for the update. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Leon?
Scott, is there anyone else who's gonna be presenting on the consent agenda items?
I believe we had just planned on Leon presenting unless an item gets pulled and we, we can present them.
Okay. Well, then if, if, uh, agenda item number 13, I know there's been some discussion in, in the public. Uh, I think it's a little bit premature to have a budget level discussion without the budget in front of us. So, uh, unless there are any objections, it's gonna be my recommendation that we pull item number 13 uh, and take it up at the August 1st budget workshop meeting so that we can consider uh, tax implications alongside bu- budget implications, which I think is probably, uh, the, you know, the wisest thing for us to do as a city.
Second that motion.
Okay, well, uh, I, I'm gonna make a motion to approve agenda. Uh, the consent agenda items number 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20.
Second.
Second. It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Is there any further discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Uh, and Scott, can you just bring this item back on August 1st for us?
Yes, sir. We'll do that.
All right. Uh, next up, agenda item number 21, First Reading. An ordinance of the city of Kyle, Texas amending, uh, ordinance number 311. The Plum Creek Planned Unit Development Zoning Ordinance amending Article Two, Part C, for non-residential development within the M X D District. Planning and zoning commission voted for two to recommend approval. And this item has a public hearing. Mr. Coons, go ahead.
Mayor, on this item, we'll have Will Atkinson from Planning present.
Will Atkinson for, um, the, the planning department for the city of Kyle. Uh, before you, we have, um, a proposed, um, zoning. The city of Kyle, uh, for Plum Creek. This is, what triggered this is the first, uh, big project in the Uptown District that we have coming up. And it's gonna be, uh, the Uptown at Plum Creek. It's our first vertical mixed use project on any large scale that we've had inside the city of Kyle. And we're all pretty excited about it. Unfortunately, because the way the, uh, the lot layout is and the block layout is for the Uptown District generally from a concept plan, there are some constraints from the block width that are, um, causing, um, some, in this current form, some non-co compliant lots that they're asking to be created. The, this project is being split into two parts because, um, from a financial perspective, their lender is only allowing them to lend on the first part. That's gonna be facing, um, the central square of the Uptown District. And then at a later date, they will build the rest of it. Sometimes we take stuff forward over to the Board of Adjustment for what would be considered a variance for a lot depth kind of deal. Um, in this case, it's technically not. While the Board of Adjustment can consider, uh, financial, um, issues as hardships, that's only a portion of what they consider. They can, they really look at the code itself. And in this instance, we believe that it wasn't appropriate to take it to the Board of Just because we did not believe that they would possibly approve it. So that's why we brought it forth as an amendment to change the code. Um, now this is not only gonna benefit, um, this first project coming online, it'll benefit every single project allowed in the M X D zoning district for Plum Creek. So this is, this is something that's gonna benefit a lot of future projects. And it creates a little bit more flexibility too. Stuff is fully supportive of it. We have no issue with it. We, um, most of the city of Kyle outside of Plum Creek actually doesn't even have a lot depth requirement for the zoning districts. And in, in most cases are, the, the projects come out fine. They have standard, um, lot shapes and everything like that. So it's not really an issue, we don't believe. The, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted, uh, four to two, uh, with Commissioner McCutcheon. He wasn't able to make it to that meeting. The two dissenters, it wasn't really a question of is it appropriate to, uh, approve the amendment there? They had really a question of, um, do they have issue with this, us changing the code to support a project that's coming online? But we believe again that it's, it's absolutely fine considering that future projects for the entire Uptown District are gonna benefit. So it's gonna benefit everybody. Do y'all have any questions?
Uh, well, before we go to questions, we're gonna, uh, have, unless there are any objections, go ahead and do a public hearing. Sure. So with that, um, uh, is there anyone registered online to speak about this item?
No, we have no one signed up.
All right. Well, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. It's now closed. Go, go ahead, Mr. Atkinson, or is there anyone with questions on the item?
Do we want to close the public hearing if it's first reading?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
So I guess my question, Will, is, uh, if we shake, we change the ordinance for this project, how is that gonna affect us further down the road with other ordinances, with other projects?
It'll make everything, um, a little bit more flexible in terms of, um, when someone wants to come and develop their property uh, in the Plum Creek M X D zoning district. But it won't be in a bad way. The, the Uptown District and also the, the people behind it, Momark, are very well known for making sure that their projects that come online are quality projects and what have you. And the, the, the whole intent is Uptown, through the development agreements that we have with Plum Creek, through the zoning code. It's supposed to be a very urban style project, very dense, very, all the streets going through, connecting, very much a grid pattern. Removing the lot depth requirement is not really gonna change anything from the way you visualize the way the Uptown District is gonna be. It's, it's literally making it just slightly more flexible. So we don't have to go to get a variance or attempt to get a variance if a lending institution says you can only build a certain portion of your project right now.
Is, is there any way that could hurt us, uh, through, in a different part of the city for making that allotment now on this project, uh, say in future projects throughout the city?
So it, the Plum Creek M X D zoning district is only in Plum Creek for starters. But as far as we can tell, just from looking at the district, looking at the project that's proposed in front of us, we don't believe it's gonna cause any, any issues.
Thank you, Will. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve, um, an ordinance of the city of Kyle, Texas amending ordinance number 311 Plum Creek Planned Unit Development Zoning Ordinance, amending Article Two, Part C, Section eight, D, subsection six.
Okay, I will second that. It's been moved by Councilwoman Shields, seconded by the mayor that we approve agenda item number 21. Is there any discussion on the motion? All is in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, I'm gonna mark that as seven, zero. I didn't hear everybody. Any objections? All right. Next up, uh, agenda item number 22, approve a contract with Uber Technologies Incorporated to provide public transit services within the Kyle City limits. Mr. Hendricks, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, Jerry Hendricks for the record. You may remember that, um, for this budget year, the council directed staff to negotiate with a rideshare provider, provide transportation services for residents and visitors in the city of Kyle. The initial provider that we were negotiating with, uh, came to an impasse with and became evident that we weren't going to be able to come to an agreement with them. So we started over and then we found Uber. Uber in a short time has been able to put together a program that, um, our task force is agreeable to. The contract before you is representative of that. And, uh, once we have approval of this contract, then we can begin, uh, the work of developing a brand, fine tuning some of the components and doing some test runs with the program. And should have a program ready to go first part of August. The, uh, only other thing I want to bring to your attention is the dollar amount approved for this program was $80,000. Now was assuming a six month program. Only have two months left in the fiscal year. So council has the ability to adjust that if they would like. We've also earmarked $150,000 potentially in next year's budget with your approval to continue the program. So that's my presentation. We have representatives from Uber on the line to answer any questions you might have with them. And I'm available for any questions as well.
Uh, we have a lot going on with this program. It's, uh, it's been a long process. And like Jerry said, there's been things that have come up, uh, throughout the, uh, the process itself and some different things that we've had some roadblocks. But, um, we're, we're getting through it. We have a lot of marketing work to do. I would even hesitate to say we're ready to go, uh, by August. But, uh, we are working diligently to, uh, make this happen as soon as possible. But we do have a lot of marketing and communication items left, uh, to get this thing off the ground. I was actually, uh, going back and looking, uh, through, uh, when the committee first, uh, came up with the idea, watching some old meetings. And it, it's been, uh, about a year and a half in the works. And I suspect it'll take a, a little bit longer. But, uh, it would be my recommendation that, uh, we go ahead and, uh, approve the contract. But it is still step one of many steps moving forward.
John, you have anything you'd like to add? I see you typed up on the screen here.
Yeah, thanks for including me here. No, I, I think just, um, I'm John McGinty, oversee partnerships with cities and transit agencies in the state of Texas. Um, and, you know, I, I think we're really excited to partner here. I sit on a team dedicated about 60 folks to launch partnerships specifically to improve mobility for folks, whether, you know, um, you're trying to go to a medical appointment, a grocery store, or the pharmacy, or to see friends and family. You know, transit really shouldn't act as a barrier for anyone, particularly during this public health crisis. So I've been really excited to engage, um, with council members, with city staff to scope a project and we, that we think can have a really positive impact on the lives of folks in the community. I'm excited to continue, um, to work and kind of put this contract before everyone. So, thanks.
John, I have a question for you. Uh, Councilmember Rizzo. John, I have a question for you. Councilmember Rizzo. And you, I know you've got the answer for this, but I just want to say during this COVID nineteen, what precautions are your drivers taking, your company are taking to keep everyone safe?
Yep, that's a great question and obviously something we've taken very seriously. So a couple of things. On the driver's side, you know, every driver's been given disinfectant masks and cleaning supplies from us to kind of clean their vehicles. For a driver to be able to take a trip on our platform, they have to take a selfie and have essentially be approved to be able to take a ride. So the driver has to wear a mask to be able to take a trip. On the rider's side, similarly, riders sign off to wearing masks for trips right now that they've kind of washed their hands and taken precautions. And then additionally, riders are sitting in the backseat now. They're cracking windows if possible to promote more airflow. And we've reduced the number of individuals that can be in a regular car down from four to three. So, you know, obviously we're continuing to work with local cities and local public health authorities to do the best and to sort of adapt our platform to be in tune of the needs, you know, of folks during this crisis here.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, no problem.
And I want to thank the Mayor Pro Tem for working on this. This is something that's much needed here in the city of Kyle. I know I've got many constituents that have been waiting for this and I, I want to tell them to be just a little bit more patient because it's coming. We just want to make sure we get it right. And that we bring back, bring up, implement a program that's going to be beneficial for them and it's going to continue to be beneficial. It's not going to be something that's not going to work. You know, it's something that we're really planning. And when we implement it, it's going to be, it's going to be a gold standard here in Kyle. So thank you.
I have some logistical questions. Go ahead, Councilor Ellison.
No, go ahead. It's fine.
Well, my questions are financial, to go back to what Mr. Hendricks was saying. Can you, can you repeat that part? Eighty thousand dollars has been allocated in the budget. The budget is, fiscal year is nearly complete. So we're talking about how long? What percentage of the year for this contract to be in effect?
We anticipate it being no more than two months. If we can get the program up and running, the first part of August. And August and September would be the last two months of the fiscal year. So.
So what would, would council be okay with directing staff to bring back a budget amendment that takes the additional, the dollars saved and basically puts a fence around those until we can decide we want to do it next budget year?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I, I was going to suggest maybe twenty thousand dollars for the two months, which would be, the pro rate of share would be higher. But then that would allow for us to keep maybe sixty thousand dollars and just move it forward and into the next year and determine what we want to do with those funds.
I think that's good. I think that's good.
Good idea.
Mayor, just to chime in here quickly, too, the way this program's being structured as well is there's no administrative fees or maintenance fees as well. You know, you're, it's set up to subsidize trips for users. And you're only paying for rides that are actually taken through the platform as well. So there's a variety of safeguards intentional as a place to make sure, you know, spending isn't running amok or anything. So that's always a question that kind of comes up first, too. So definitely understand where you're coming from on that one.
What are your thoughts on it, Mayor Pro Tem? You're muted.
My concern has always been that this program is going to do better than anticipated, which is one of the reasons why we held off. But it actually ended up working out because the other vendor that we couldn't get to, to get all the way through the process with us. We earmarked more than double that for the next year based on, on the, that, you know, expectation. So my hope is that, you know, we would keep those funds there, just in case. The last thing I wanted to do, other communities that started off with this as a pilot program and it's gone better than they anticipated. And then when they run out of money, they've just stopped cold. But some of those cities have other transportation needs. So it is more of a true pilot program. In our situation, this would be our main transportation system. So I think that we can leave it whole so that we can, we can carry over.
So the, the carryovers really, I think we're probably actually both saying the same thing. The carryover is what I'm interested in and making sure that the, the dollars, if, if we don't expend the dollars, what happens to them? And generally speaking, unexpended dollars just kind of go through a, a certain cycle and get carried over into fund balance. And then we have to determine how much of fund balance we want to use to bring the ballot, the budget back whole. And I thought in this case, seeing as how this is a pilot program, already budgeted funds for this year. It, it's kind of to your point. It's about making sure that those funds are able to be used for next year's budget out of unexpended funds because we had them this year. So it kind of strengthens the, the item is my thinking. I think we can accomplish it just by saying, leave the budget alone, but just by directing staff to bring back in their report how much was unexpended. And, and then we'll be able to make determinations at that point. Would that be a good point?
Either way, I think it accomplishes the goal.
Vez, are you clear on the, the thinking here?
Yes, sir. I think the, the best way to do that, what both Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem have been talking about, is to go ahead and encumber the funds, the entire eighty thousand dollars. And to the extent whatever remains unused will automatically roll over the project.
Will, I'm not wanting necessarily for them to automatically roll over, is what I'm saying. Because next year, we're anticipating a hundred and fifty thousand in the budget. Is that what I heard?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I, I, we need to see what that's going to look like in the budget, but then also we can take the dollars that aren't expended and determine whether we want to add to it, replace some of those funds because we're going to be probably looking at cash flow challenges in, in the next year.
Mayor, we can give you all a report at the end of the fiscal year to, to let you all know how much remains in that contract.
Okay. That works for me.
I'm good with that.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve agenda item number twenty-two, contract. It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Rizzo. Is there any further discussion?
Just want to thank staff, particularly Jerry Hendricks, for his persistence on this and staying on top of trying to find a resolution for ADA compliance. Thanks to Uber for working with us on that. So John, thanks to that team. Matt as well in our IT department that worked feverishly and, and really jumped headfirst in this project and created us an app and all these great things. So major kudos to him as well. And then Mayor Pro Tem coach as well has been working on this nonstop, I know. And as you said, it's, it's been a long time coming and it's taken a little bit longer than we anticipated. A little bit longer to go, but a lot of work has gone into it. Thank him for his consistency on that as well.
And just, just one more group, the citizens. There's been some persistent citizens out there. Thank them for, for pushing. All right, if there's nothing else, call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you. Any objection to the item we just had being finally passed, number twenty-one, the M X D?
No objection.
All right, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and call it finally passed. All right, next up, agenda item number twenty-three, approval of Edmondson proposal in an amount of two point five million dollars for design and construction of a facility at one oh four South Burleson and landscaping at Mary Kyle Hartson Park.
Mayor and council, Scott Sellers, for the record. You have a, an item in your packet on twenty-three. This is a a project for our downtown for the one oh four South Burleson property. I believe the public has seen this on our agenda a few times now. The council became owners of this, this property or the city did a year ago. And we did put a request for proposal out not too long ago for firms that would provide a proposal for a facility at that address, as well as provide a additional landscaping services at Mary Kyle Hartson Park. And before you tonight is a firm that was selected by a small task force that, that looked over and interviewed finalists for, for this project. The two point five million dollars is, is ultimately coming from the settlement with Kinder Morgan. And this project is much needed for our downtown and, and was also addressed in the Texas Downtown Association report. So with that, you have the proposal before you. They, the firm will begin work immediately and hopefully be, we will be under construction sometime later this fall. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody have any questions for Scott?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that with regards to the park in and of itself, the landscaping and around the old city halls, that, that's what we're talking about, too, right? Continuation. So is there supposed to be any special permitting, any special licensing that's supposed to be obtained before we do anything on that? Just want to make sure we touch on that.
Yeah, the, the park does have a historic designation on it. And so whenever there is, is work that may alter certain protected assets or design elements within the park, then an application or permit does need to be made to Texas Historical Commission. And so we would work with the firm if, if that is in the proposal on that, on that application.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor?
Councilor Sheil.
First of all, I'd like to say that I am very excited about this and seeing this come to fruition. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to, for the approval of Edmondson Reed proposal in the amount of two point five million for design and construction of the facility at one oh four South Burleson and landscaping at Mary Kyle Hartson Park.
Second, it's been moved by Councilor Sheil, seconded by the mayor. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, seven to zero. All right, next up, agenda item number twenty-four, first reading, an ordinance adopting an administrative permitting process for authorizing encroachments in the right of way and city easements, authorizing the city engineer to approve encroachment applications, providing for the approval forms, providing an application fee and related matters. Mr. Sellers.
Okay, Mayor and council, this item is one where in the past, the city of Kyle has brought forward direct encroachment contracts for the council to approve. I'll give you some examples where maybe there's a, a structure that has an awning or some sort of overhang or other design feature that, that encroaches into the city right of way or into an easement. We have typically brought those, those items to the council for, for approval. However, there, there are cities that delegate that approval authority to staff members. And so the ordinance before you does give the ability for the city engineer to handle applications for businesses or private property owners who would like to erect a structure that is fully within or overhanging into, encroaching into a city easement or right of way. Another example could be utilizing parking spaces. For example, we, we have several instances of that through town where, where private businesses will, will use parking stalls for that nature. Certain elements at, at city parks. So basically wherever there's city property and a private use encroaching into that property, this would allow the engineer to review that, assess a, a fee for that service and and we would not be bringing those forward individually to the city council. Now, in the proposal that you have in your packet, we, we have left a blank for the, the permit costs. We're, we're doing our research right now, looking at other cities and what they charge for the permit. So we would like to bring this back for one more reading with that filled in, once we have a little bit more information. But we wanted to bring this forward at this time, in case you had any questions and we can, we can amend as necessary for second reading.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Anybody have any questions for Scott?
I, I do have a question, Scott. So I've seen this happen in Austin sometimes, and my concern is which way the water is diverted. If you do a roof or any kind of overhang, some, sometimes we have some of these permittings happen and we end up flooding a neighbor or something like that. So I want to make sure that we have some kind of language in there to mitigate that, to make sure that we're not flooding out a neighbor, adding more water to existing covert that's going to backflow or something like that.
Yeah, I think all that would be addressed within the, the application process if the engineer deems that there's a water diversion that's necessary, then that will need to be addressed before that, that permit is granted. But, but that's a, a good point. And we actually have a, a neighborhood where we ultimately ended up addressing that issue through a development agreement. But yes, if there's a, a roof line that, that encroaches into the permit, that, that stormwater does need to be diverted back into that, you know, appropriate storm receptacle.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Yes. So thanks to staff for putting this together and giving us something to work with. Would, so right now it's showing that everything would be through administrative process. Is there any kind of appeal process set up in case an applicant disagrees with or would want us a different opinion than what administratively was approved?
As, as currently drafted, it does not, this is paid, page signs for the record. As currently drafted, the city engineer's denial and approval is final. There's not an appeal process. The city engineer can choose to take it up to council. If, if he decides it's what should happen, we can put an appeal process in there if needed.
I would advocate that we have an appeal process added to the language.
I second that.
Do you want to propose anything specifically?
I think it should be, council should be the appeal body.
Is that one of the amendments you can bring back for second reading, Scott?
Excuse me?
Is that one of the amendments you can bring back for second reading?
Yes, sir. I will do that.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I, I just want to, the second that I appreciate this effort. I know we've had businesses that have tried to look at more creative ways to continue to stay afloat essentially during this time. And if this is potentially one way as well that a business could perhaps pivot and be an entrepreneur and continue to, to do what they need to do, then, you know, I think this is a, it's a good step forward.
All right, well, then I will make a motion to approve and to direct staff to bring back amendments as discussed. It's agreed. It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Ellison's showing so we can see it. All right, any other questions or comments? All those in favor? All those in favor.
Just, no, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mayor. No, we're good.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, seven to zero. Luckily with Mayor Protem being muted, I'm a good lip reader, so it works out fine.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a reminder that we have some more business executive session that we haven't covered.
Well, no.
Well, we got one more item first.
Okay, all right. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Tracy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
25, sorry, Tracy. The best for last.
Next up, Agenda Item Number 25, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Pie in the Sky.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So Labor Day weekend is seven and a half weeks away. And as we know with our wonderful pandemic that we are still currently facing, and I don't see it decreasing anytime.
Is there a way that you can?
I'm sorry, what?
Scott, you're not muted.
Matt, can we change the view? Because we're on Tracy's phone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I'm not sure if we can do that manually or not.
Yeah, due to my technical difficulties.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Okay. So I just, I think it is very, very overly optimistic to think that this pandemic is going to be at a state where it would be safely able to be visited by all of our residents. And I just, I hate to do it because I know staff has spent a lot of time. Luckily, we haven't spent any money, but they have spent a lot of time on, you know, trying to get this together to be able to do it. But I honestly feel at this point that we do need to go ahead and cancel Pie in the Sky. So I was wondering what the other council members felt about this. And then I do know staff is looking to maybe be able to do some amended things that weekend that would be safe for our community. But I just don't feel like Pie in the Sky will be, the festival as we know it this year just will not be, so.
Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I just, I guess my thought is a little sad to see it not happen this year. But I know due to the circumstances, you know, public safety is priority number one. But I just want to thank Tracy for all her help with Pie in the Sky, planning, P&amp;Z for the committee that was a part of this. And all of staff has been putting a lot of time into this. And I know that, boy, it's going to be hard to not have this event this year. I had a great time last year and I just, I'm kind of sad that we're in the times we're in right now. But yeah, keeping everybody safe is priority number one. So just want to thank everybody who's worked hard on this.
Just sort of missing the, you know, I'm going to miss the pie in the face and the pie eating contest, man. I did both.
You mean the shaving cream?
Sure. How about another apple pie, man? I love that.
I'm going to miss getting, miss getting that chance to hit you with the pie.
Actually, we're going to have whipped cream this year. I was going to bring a cooler out there.
We're going to miss Lollapop, you know, we're going to miss, oh, man.
Well, as I said, staff is trying to come up with something, something amended to see what we can possibly do that still, you know, brings our community together. But again, safely. So, you know, we still have some options and we'll probably bring that back in the next couple of meetings, so.
So maybe this is pre-planning already for Fajita Fiesta.
That too, yes.
There you go.
Say what now?
I just want to double the, repeat the appreciation for staff that, and it's a whole effort. In past years, seeing staff pull together to come and help that weekend. It's phenomenal to see Team Kyle pull together to get that event. Obviously, Sarah Watson, Lee, that is our special events coordinator. But and she does a heck of a job putting that together and working really hard on that. I just want to take, thank the whole Kyle team that usually pulls together as well. We'll just have to pivot and as Councilman Villalobos said, just planning and ability for other future great things.
Yes. Yeah, this was, this was something that was coming down the pipeline and it needs to be addressed. Obviously, with everything that's going on, of course, the state.
All right, any further comments or thoughts? We do have an executive session. Councilmember Sheel.
Well, actually, Councilmember Tobias was talking.
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay.
I'm so sorry, my audio is going really strange. I can't hear anything.
No problem. Yeah, I just wanted to.
Did I just, you were talking?
It happens, believe me or not.
It went quiet on my end.
I'm in other meetings and they do the same thing. Oh, Mike's talking, it's time to go.
Oh, there it went.
I don't feel bad about it, trust me.
We're talking about Fajita empanadas.
All right, well, I yield the meeting to Mayor Protem.
Yeah. You know the drill.
Michael, do you want to finish your thought?
Yes, thank you, sir. Yeah, like I said, this was something that was going to come down the pipeline eventually. We knew this was coming. And again, thank you to the city staff for planning all this out. But again, we've got to play it safe. We've got to put the safety of the public at the forefront. So hate to see it not happen. I agree, we need a pamphlet and hopefully next year we can have something better. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I'm as bummed as everybody else about this. Thank you, Councilmember Sheel, for bringing it forward. I know it's hard to do and I don't know how much you care about the event as well as so much of the staff and council. It is a definite bummer, but it is one of many in 2020. We're just going to do what we need to do. And that's why I'm so glad that we stuck to it with the fireworks show. And at least gave this community one good event this year we could all enjoy. Did the mayor actually leave for this or is he going to try to finish this out?
I think, I think he, his audio is getting in trouble, Mayor Protem. So if you could lead us into executive session, Tracy?
Yeah, sorry, I'm back, but go ahead.
Okay, there he is. Okay, you want me to go ahead and read it, Mayor? Okay. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics. Alcohol sales, regional detention fines. And that's because of pending or contemplated litigation or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section 551.071. And then convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551.087, Texas Government Code, to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business processes, prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city. Project to go.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion, seven to zero. There is no action taken. There will be action taken now. Councilor Rizzo.
So Mayor, Council, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to revisit the bar hours, the midnight from Sunday through Thursday. Is that all we need, Page? On the motion?
Yes, that is. That's all you need.
All right. Did we get a second? I think I may have missed a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilor Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Villalobos that we direct staff to bring back an ordinance amending bar hours Sunday through Thursday to require bars to close at midnight. Is that, is that the nature of the direction?
It is, Mayor.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Want to elaborate on that a little, Councilor Rizzo?
So this was brought forward just to try to deter some of the problems we're having around the downtown area. But it's also to take care of the families in areas while, to reduce some of the noise and to also try to not make sure that everybody's adhering to the rules. I can tell you this is going to bring a strong bar to make sure that we're doing everything right. Make sure you're hearing to what you're supposed to do. Don't over-serve patrons and make sure you're permanent for those that come out to visit us.
Okay, is there any, anybody have any? For myself, that I appreciate you bringing this forward, Councilor Rizzo. I had a.
Do we lose the mayor?
I think so.
Mayor Protem can step in.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Rizzo. We have a second by Councilmember Villalobos. It doesn't sound like we have any further discussions, so I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Good night, everyone.